Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. A couple of announcements. If you have cell phones, please put them on vibrate or turn them off. If you have to take a call, please exit the room and make the call in the hallway. Should there be an emergency during the meeting, please do not use the elevators. Exit calmly from this door. You may go left and then right and down the stairs. If that is blocked, you go to the right and down the stairs. And again, a reminder, please do not use the elevators. If you need special assistance, just let us know and we'll get it for you. Thank you. At this time, I would call Reverend Kevin Quackett from Bethany Lutheran Church up for our invocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us all together tonight. Lord, there are so many different views and opinions in this room today, and yet it's in those differences that we find strength. Remind us, Lord, that we've been called by those who have voted us in to do what's best for them, but also for the entire community. Lord, in all that we do, let us do it with love and affection toward those who are called to serve. And remind us, Lord, that we're here not to serve just the loudest, but even those who have the quietest voice and at least likely to be heard. Lord, we do thank you for tonight and ask you to guide our consideration, guide all the conversation, and guide the decisions that they can be done for all those that we serve. In Christ name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Quackett. Appreciate it. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to welcome some very special guests with us tonight. The Girl Scout Troop 865. And I'd like to recognize those scouts that are with us. Phoebe Burke, please stand. Or just stay standing. Lily Pedersen. Riley Dryden. Addison Chatham. Riley Taylor. Sidney Johnson. Allison Goldsboro. And Miley Robey. Thank you, girls, and welcome. Okay, we have two presentations tonight. The first being the Art Institute and Gallery, and that's presented by Executive Director Allison Greis. Allison, please join us at the podium.
Thank you.
Okay. If you all will entertain me, I'm going to ask you to swirl your finger up in the air clockwise, looking straight up. And slowly, yes, the audience is participating as well. I love it.
It's on television now.
Slowly bring this down in front of you. Remember, we were clockwise originally. Are we still moving clockwise?
No.
If you brought your finger down this way, you'll actually be moving counterclockwise. Yes, do one more time. Isn't that odd? So the reason I am doing this is because what's the difference between this and this? Does anybody know?
Perspective.
Exactly, your point of view. So I'm here tonight to give you a different perspective on the arts. My name is Allison Greis. I'm the Executive Director of our local arts community art center, the Art Institute and Gallery of Salisbury. And before I begin, I'd like to ask by a raise of hands, who here has heard of the Art Institute and Gallery? And I'll include the audience on this, too. That's good. Good numbers. I like it. And now, who has visited the AING in the last year? Not bad. All right. I'm happy. Good. Gallup Incorporated did a study on 26 communities across the U.S. to determine what attaches people to their community. The outcome was, to me, not surprising. The answer was entertainment and social offering, how welcoming the city is and its aesthetics. In short, the arts and culture. When we give people a reason to come to downtown Salisbury for events like Third Fridays, unique shopping and food, or for great activities and experiences, they will come and they will stay. AING already has two of these boxes checked. We have the Martha Gaye Gift Shop, featuring handmade work of local artists and artisans, live music at our Third Friday art openings and fundraisers, and of course, the classes and exhibitions that AING has hosted since its inception over 60 years ago. We believe that what we have to offer complements the local food venues downtown, along with other small creative businesses such as Barefoot Baby Boutique and Corsets and Cogs. These entities make Salisbury unique, things that are worth turning off of Route 50 and 13 to check out. Last week, I had the pleasure of meeting and thanking Governor Larry Hogan and his wife Yumi for their support of and investment in the arts. The arts are fundamental to the economy of our state, delivering a $1 billion impact with $49 million generated in state and local revenues. There is no denying that the arts are a vital element of downtown economic development, and we are excited to be a cornerstone partner for the arts in Salisbury. The Ward Museum is already a huge economic driver in Salisbury, and we know that there is more opportunity to expand arts tourism in our area, especially downtown. As Salisbury is evolving and investment in downtown is picking up speed, I'd like to talk about what we call the three Es of our mission and touch on how these points tie in with the goals for downtown revitalization. And the three Es are education, exhibition, and engagement. So first, education. As many of you know, our main mission as an arts nonprofit is to bring art education to people of all ages. We have a variety of classes ongoing throughout the year for both children and adults. Many people have brought their children and their children's children to AING for art education. We have classes for kids throughout the summer, art tutoring, homeschool art classes, and this year, we have been able to take classes into the community to at-risk youth groups through the Out of School Time Program. For adults, we have painting classes, open drawing sessions, and soon we will have ceramic classes for all ages. We plan to begin artist professional development classes, visual literacy sessions for school groups, and regular artist talks in the near future. As a nonprofit with extremely limited staff time and funding, we feel that we have done very well and hope to accomplish even more with growing community investment. We plan to offer future discounted and free programming to those who would most benefit from it, children from low-income families, the disabled, and the elderly in our community. Visual art is a universal language that transcends all cultures and all ages. From the moment we're able to see, we benefit from visual images and cues. There's a visual thinking method used in pre-k and kindergarten classrooms where children view art and talk about masterworks like Picasso, Picasso da Vinci, et cetera. As a group, they freely discuss what they see, and as they express individual thoughts and feelings, the teacher provides them with new terms to help them describe what they're trying to say. A study done on the method shows that these kids not only had a better understanding of visual images, they had stronger growth in math and reading, and better social and emotional growth. In an age where society is becoming increasingly digital, visual art can help us better understand each other and interpret what's in front of us. But more than anything, it's imperative that children first learn to be social beings, to create, to go outside, to build, to play, to imagine. This same creative freedom is found in art. In being kids and through play, children learn to be functioning social humans. The second E, exhibition. Some of you indicated that you had been to the gallery recently, and I hope that you enjoyed the exhibition that you saw. So far this year, we have had the Petit Art Show, featuring miniatures and small artworks, and two youth shows, the first being a collaboration with the 4-H Club of the Eastern Shore in March, which was Youth Art Month. And the second, currently up, is our Annual Blooming Artist Show, showcasing the best artwork of local K through 12 youth. We are very proud to be a community art gallery. We host art from local artists of all ages, all backgrounds, all skill levels. You can see the artwork of amateurs and professionals, self-taught and academically trained alike. We believe that our inclusivity is what makes AING unique in our community. And we know this to be true every time we see a child dragging their parents in to admire their tempura and construction paper artwork, or when a retiree gets to finally see all of the years of passionate avocation hung on a wall in the gallery for the first time in their life. Finally, engagement. This is the exciting stuff. This is what makes us tick and brings everything we do together. We all know that the arts are sometimes mislabeled. They're often perceived as a luxury for a select few, or it's suggested that artistic talent is inherent and not something everyone can participate in because they can't draw or they aren't artistic. The Art Institute and Gallery has a very different approach to the arts. We are more than just an art gallery or an education center or a group of artists. AING is a place where creativity thrives and all should feel welcome, a creative community, one that if nourished properly will become a thriving part of downtown revitalization efforts. Engagement with art comes in many forms. Taking a class, enjoying and learning to appreciate art, teaching art classes, and donating time or money to the arts are all forms of engagement. All are invaluable to our success and to the success of the larger community as a whole. When the arts are valued in a city, when the culture of a town is nourished through investment of time, money, research, and planning, when the children of a community are treasured and their minds and spirits cared for as well as their bodies, beautiful things happen. There's a great deal of nurturing and excitement brewing within our organization and within the city as a whole. The We Heart Salisbury Awards this year were incredibly inspiring, and they made me so excited to be a part of a small but growing downtown community. It's amazing what we've accomplished in the last year with our three part-time staff, plus a lot of caffeine thanks to Main Roots, successful youth and adult exhibitions, art programming for at-risk youth, increased participation with downtown community partners and community events, including Third Fridays, Red, White &amp; Boom, and the Hero Day 5K. One of our proudest moments this year was when we recently achieved our campaign for growth goal of $10,000 and did so prior to the announcement of the public portion of the campaign. The money raised has supported the renovation and refurbishment of our clay studio and of the exhibition galleries, making possible the startup of our open clay studio, the first in Salisbury, later this spring. We'd love for you to join us at the end of May at our ribbon cutting ceremony as well. As we move forward with conviction and enthusiasm, we have a new stretch goal of $20,000, as you can see in your pledge cards and posters in your folders. The funds raised will assist us in purchasing a new computer and graphic software for our university interns, as well as continuing to expand our education outreach and new media communication efforts. We know that with the right investments, AING could do even more to increase traffic downtown, engage diverse populations, young and old, and encourage the ongoing renaissance that is already in motion because of dedicated, passionate people like you. By working together and investing in creativity and culture, Salisbury will become the thriving, vibrant community we all hope for. And in closing, I'd like to ask you one more question. Who can I count on seeing in the gallery in the next coming weeks? All right. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all you've done to support the AING and all you will do in days to come.
Thank you, Allison. We look forward to the arts to continue to be a catalyst for our development downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. At this time, I would invite Beth Olson from SAC to come up and give us a short presentation. Good evening.
It's been really funny sitting down.
That's okay.
Technical difficulties. My name is Beth Olson, and I am the Executive Director of the Salisbury Substance Abuse Community Center, affectionately known as SAC. We are part of the solution to the problem of addiction. I don't know about you, but I hear an awful lot of dialogue about how horrible the heroin epidemic is, and I'm here to tell you we are part of the solution. We don't look like much. We kind of look like a brown paper sack, but... Go back. Let me go back. Eight hundred to 1,000 times a week, somebody crosses the threshold of our buildings seeking recovery. That's 47,000 visits a year. That's a whole lot of recovery going on. Who comes to SAC? Well, if you'll notice, the large majority of people are older, but 25% of the people who come to SAC are under the age of 35. 15% are under the age of 25. How long are they in active addiction? Some of them not long. 25 to 30% are only in active addiction for one to four years, or zero to four years. That's because heroin is fast and it's ugly and it's nasty. Alcohol can take a lifetime. So we have all ages and all lengths of addictions. There's an interesting correlation between going to meetings and staying clean and sober. If you'll notice, the lines are almost equal, and the people with 15 or more years of sobriety are still going to the SAC Center. That's because it's passed on one person at a time, one person at a time, reaches out a hand and works with a newcomer. This is our family of 12-step fellowships. We have seven. You probably have heard of Alcoholics Anonymous. It's the granddaddy. It was started in 1939. Narcotics Anonymous, you've probably heard of as well. GA is Gamblers Anonymous, and trust me, compulsive gambling is every bit as destructive as heroin. Chemically Dependent Anonymous is a small fellowship here in Salisbury, but they don't really care what you're using to get high, and so people tend to be very comfortable there if they use all kinds of things. Lots of times, the really hardcore drug users gravitate towards NA, and the people who are abusing pills or like to drink a little and then abuse some pills, they end up in CDA. OA is Overeaters Anonymous. It's new to us this year. We are thrilled. We have a mighty little group that's gaining momentum. ALANON and NARANON are for the family and friends of alcoholics and addicts. I think it's harder to watch sometimes than it is to be the active addict or alcoholic. Watching is horrible, and you need as much support as the alcoholic or addict does. Thirty-eight meetings a week, times 52 weeks a year is almost 2,000 meetings a year. That's a whole lot of recovery going on. We are open 365 days a year unless the governor declares an emergency and you can't drive. And we found out this year that the governor's orders, the governor's order, no matter what the roads are like in Salisbury. It was interesting. What we provide, we provide a safe, welcoming facility for 12-step meetings. We provide referral information. We have all kinds of requests for information about treatment agencies, housing, how do I get an ID, how do I get to social services, what's the one-stop job center, and so on. So we give out a lot of information. We've started providing some education and training for the recovery community, and I'll say more about that in a minute. And we have started education and outreach to the community at large. Thus far this year, I've talked to 256 graders about addiction and recovery. I have spoken to students at the Salisbury School, at Warwick Community College, and we are scheduled to do a presentation at the university and go to other schools before year's end. Been to a lot of civic groups. If you'd like me to come talk to your group, give us a call. Be happy to come. Since we last met, I was here just about a year ago, and things have happened, lots of things. We offer free naloxone training. We do this in cooperation with the Health Department. We offer it once a quarter. The next one is Saturday, May 14th, and so far, we have trained 56 people at the SAC Center in the use of naloxone. And I'm happy to report on February the 2nd, one of our desk managers, one of our employees who'd been trained in the use of naloxone saved a life. She administered the naloxone and used CPR to bring this young man back to life, and he came to, came back just as the ambulance pulled up. So we're very, very proud of her. This year, we decided to come out of the closet and go public. We were the best kept secret and sound, and Minuteman Press and the Community Foundation helped us with the design and printing of the brochures and what we needed to go bilingual. So all of our literature is now in Spanish as well as English, and we have a room set aside for a Spanish-speaking meeting with Spanish literature. We hope that gains traction. SAC was ugly when I got there. The inside was the same color as the jail, so I went looking for a tower of paint. And Glidden Paint and Home Depot gave us 55 gallons of paint. The Community of Joy Church provided the manpower, and over three separate weekends, provided us with four beautiful meeting rooms that bear no resemblance to the inside of the Wycomico County Detention Center, which is great. We decided we needed to have a party and let people know we were here. We had our first breakfast last September during Recovery Month. It's me with Kathleen Monet. The event was at Dove Point, and it was a breakfast because none of us drank, and we decided we should probably have a breakfast, not a Friday night event. And so we were there bright and early, and you can see there's Connie Strott. She was our emcee for the event, and Laura Mitchell, who is sadly not here tonight. I understand she's having some difficulty. And Martin Hutchinson, who was the pastor of the Community of Joy Church, who did the painting. He also gave the blessing. And our Sun Perk staff, who gave us a magnificent breakfast. And then we were in full swing. It really was a party. We had a band at 7:00 a.m. Such fools came out and played for us. Our keynote speaker was John Winslow, who is local but is also very much a part of the national and regional recovery movements. We have a lot of support, and we couldn't do what we do without these people. They have given us sustaining support over the years, and United Way has been our biggest supporter since 1991. We really couldn't do it without them. Their support gives us about 60% of our budget. The group's past the basket. That gives us about 10% of our budget, and then we have about 30% to raise every year. So anything that anyone can do is always appreciated. What's next? Our next breakfast is September 22nd. John Shinhauser from the McShin Foundation will be with us. He is a Marine veteran. He is a person in long-term recovery. He was Karen Foundation's Alumni of the Year in 2006, and he and his wife Carol McDade have the largest comprehensive recovery organization in Virginia, taking people from day one to about year five. So we're thrilled to have him. How can you help? Spread the word. There's help. There's hope, and it's free for the asking. 12-step fellowships don't get paid. This is a support group. People do it because they need to get sober and then because somebody helped them get sober. We don't keep any records. We don't ask for an ID. We don't ask for an insurance card. We're not taking attendance. If somebody thinks they have a problem and wants to come in with a baseball cap and their collar turned up to, you know, be incognito and sit in a meeting, please do that. Please. There are a lot of people looking normal who really have a drug or alcohol problem and they're really too ashamed to ask for help. Volunteer. The Board of Directors is in need of people to support the mission by serving on one of our committees. We're in a strategic planning process, and I promise, when the plan is in place, there'll be lots to do. Display our brochures and our meeting schedules that are in place at business or your agency. We'd love to bring them to you. Just give us a call. And donate. We're a nonprofit. Sorry, unashamedly, I will say we're a nonprofit. Every contribution makes a difference. Or you could become a sponsor for the breakfast in September. And again, every little bit helps. So we've come a long way in a year. I can't wait for the strategic plan to be in place, and I look forward to letting you know what that looks like. So thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Beth. Appreciate it very much. And just so we don't forget, and for those at home, the number again to reach the organization's is 410-749-9482. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion now to approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Nichols. Good evening.
Good evening. On the consent agenda, we have the March 21st, 2016 Work Session Minutes, Resolution Number 2623, approving the appointment of Rose McGregor to the Sustainability Advisory Committee, Green Team, Resolution Number 2624, approving the appointment of Charles Sims to the Sustainability Advisory Committee, Green Team, Resolution Number 2625, approving the reappointment of Lynn Cathcart to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Resolution Number 2626, authorizing the Police Department to accept possession of a light armored tactical vehicle valued at approximately $10,000 from the Defense Reutilization Marketing Office 1033 D R M O program, Resolution Number 2627, accepting a donation from Life Scout Richard Duncan, Boy Scout Troop Number 185 of St. Francis de Sales to construct mile marker posts in the city park, Resolution Number 2628, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention for the purpose of expending grant funds in the amount of $88,458, and lastly, Resolution Number 2629, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with various private foundations for the purpose of expending grant funds in the amount of $23,000. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please ask a question.
Yeah, I was just going to ask about Resolution 2628 and whether or not we have the license plate readers already, or is this the first batch of license plate readers?
Thank you for your question. Chief, dodge this one, some coming up. This is supplemental funding from the G O C C P for five additional license plate readers. So this is the state had extra money, and they gave it out to the Safe Streets members. So it's five more.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, then I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent, approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have a motion for the award of bids. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the award of bids. Ms. Miller.
Good evening. We only have one item this evening. It's for change order number four for RFP 04-11. That's the engineering services for Fitzwater Street Lift Station. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Department of Public Works to process change order number four in the amount of $34,820 for RFP 04- $34,820 for RFP 04-11, Engineering Services for Fitzwater Street Sewer Lift Station. The original contract was awarded to George Miles and Bure in February 2011 for work to include a feasibility study, recommendation for proposed upgrades and replacement, preparation of construction drawings and specifications for bidding, project cost schedule, cost estimate, permit acquisitions, associated survey and stakeout, and finally, bidding and construction phase services. This change order, number four, provides for a redesign of the pump station in anticipation of its relocation across the street to the corner of Pearl and Fitzwater. This relocation is necessary to accommodate the potential development that may occur on the Marina parcel upon successful execution of a land disposition contract between the City of Salisbury and Salisbury Development Group. Additional details can be found within the attached departmental memo. For change order number four, funds are available in the project account that I noted in your packet. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval to process change order number four, as noted above, to George Miles and Bure in the amount of $34,820.
Questions? Mr. Mayor, comment?
Just worth noting that the difference, the cost difference, is being paid for by the developer in this case, and, you know, I think it sets an example for some things that we can continue to do in the future as we, as we see more revitalization of economic development in the city.
I have a question. As I read, you're moving this because of the development over on the other side of the street where actually the Marina is.
Yes.
So, and when you're moving on the other side, suppose somebody else wants to develop something on that side. What happens?
What does that mean?
What does that mean?
Yeah, this is, it's private property. It's not city property. It would become, just that one little piece of property would become city property, but this is a vacant lot that the developers have purchased. So, one way or another, it's going to be, one way or another, it's going to be on Fitzwater Street and come out of the physical street. Right now, it's under the street. One way or another, it will be on Fitzwater Street.
I understand that, too.
So, the question is, will it be where, where there is no development, or will it be where there is an opportunity to kind of, to put it on, on the street where there's a kind of perfectly sized parcel? So, it would stand in the way of development currently, would not allow any, any development on Fitzwater Street anymore, on the one open parcel, or it can go across the street. It's really all there is to it. I mean, it can either happen, or it can stand in the way of, of development.
And the developer is the one that, the lot is going to be in there.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm just saying, you're moving it from one side of the street, so it can be developed. But then, the other side...
I'm trying to remember when, when, during one of those things where it, the pipes burst, and I was looking down, trying to figure out how big, I know Mike is here with the square footage. It's not terribly huge. And it's not terribly small either, honestly. It's a pump station. Maybe we should, for the group, tell everybody what a pump station is. Get everybody writing down on their notebooks.
The Fitzwater pump station is not one of the larger pump stations like we have in North and South Side, but it is a critical station because it services Purdue factory there. So, and it's important, and difficult as we had in terms of maintenance is because pump station's in the street. So, the original design was to relocate that outside of the street, behind where some of the existing, the generator set and everything that you do see outside of the street.
Let me, as a point of reference, how compared to the lift station up on Naylor Mill Road next to the hotel, is it larger or smaller than that? I mean, that one's pretty, it has a large reservoir that goes into the ground.
Yeah. It's probably somewhat similar in size. The good comparison is you look at, just down the road on Fitzwater is the North Side Station. That is the, one of the biggest pump stations we have. It goes, because that goes pumps directly to the wastewater plant. That is very critical. On Fitzwater, actually pumps to North Side.
Mike, would you say smaller than the houses? You know, it's not the size of a house.
No, no. It's more like the size of a shed, I think.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest things you'll see above ground are the generator set and fencing that would surround it for security purposes.
Is there, is, I'm just wondering if I hear the council wants to question, are you wondering, like, exactly where it is across the street?
I know exactly where it is. I know exactly where it is.
Is that where first, which one curves around, the east one curves around and hits?
No, it's right on Pearl.
It's on Pearl. It's at the bottom of the hill.
Pearl and Fitzwater, right at the bottom of the hill.
On the east side.
But I, but I think the developer's intention was hoping to have it there, and that's was part of the purpose that they, reason that they bought that lot, to not develop the lot.
So, is our expectation?
I think that's what I remember from the work session.
May add your questions. Is it our expectation that obviously the developer's not going to develop that lot now because there's pumps, there's a, there's a pump station?
Yeah, I think that was, that was specifically.
And that was my concern.
Yeah, that, that, his point is, nothing will happen if they don't.
Right.
So, it's, it's nothing or this is the question. Public question.
Not really, but it's, I'm all right.
Okay, then, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the award of the bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. A nays. Ms. Jackson voted aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2630.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
The Department of Community Development has completed the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. The total award for program year 16 is $290,447. This represents a decrease of 2% from last year. For the 2016 action plan, the Community Development Block Grant Review Committee recommended to the mayor, and the mayor approved the following. $58,089 for 20% of the administrative cost for the department. $100,000 to Salisbury and Ebert Housing Services for closing cost and down payment assistance grants. $37,650 to Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County for housing construction, in this case being 707 East Church Street. $43,500 to Telemont Corporation for financial education and housing counseling, and $51,208 for the City of Salisbury to install sidewalks in low mod-income neighborhoods. The draft action plan was available, available for public review on March 18th. It was posted on the city website and available via hard copy in the Wycomico County Library. Thirty-day comment period ended on April 18th, 2016. As of the memo in your packet, no comments had been received. Ms. Stam is in the audience, and she's indicated that she still has not received any. A first public hearing was held on Wednesday, January 27th, at which all applicants were given the opportunity to present their projects. A second public hearing was held on Wednesday, April 13th, 2016. During the hearing, residents received the status report on previously funded open projects and an overview of the projects submitted for the FY 16 action plan. The attached resolution authorizes the mayor to submit the 2016 action plan to HUD for review and approval. Thank you.
I just have a quick question. I'm sure Mrs. Stam's going to know what this is. On the, on the sidewalks, one of the, one of the most important things, the former council president, Louise Smith, was the continuation of us putting sidewalks there in, in our low and moderate income neighborhoods. So, I just, I figured you'd, you'd probably bring one of these, knowing I would be here, but a map of where they're going?
We haven't selected the exact sites yet. We have, we've been concentrating in the Church Street Doverdale neighborhood, so my assumption is, we'll continue working in that neighborhood.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, thank you. All right, I'll call the motion to approve Resolution Number 2630. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2383 for the second reading. Mr. Tillman.
This is the second reading of the ordinance for the new fire station and the easement requested by the power company, Delmar Power. An ordinance of the City of Salisbury granting a utility easement to Delmar Power and Light Company across city-owned property on Brown Street in Salisbury, Maryland. And do you want me to read this one again, or are we good for the?
I think we're fine.
Okay. The, I, there weren't any questions the last time, and the diagram shows where on the property the utility easement will be located, and it's necessary as a result of the new construction.
All right, I, I need a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Irtan, Ms. Jackson. All, any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2384 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2016 general fund budget to appropriate funding for the services required in the development of lots 1 and 11, whereas the city's determined there's a need to increase development in the downtown area of the city, and whereas the city should continue to encourage and work with developers to create additional quality mixed-use structures incorporating housing, retail, and parking garage, and whereas the city entered into a disposition contract to sell lots 1 and 11 to Deverco LLC with development rights for the lots, and whereas Deverco has requested a financial contribution from the city for an additional urban planning study and redesign for lots 1 and 11 to best utilize the area for public infrastructure, and whereas the city's desires to facilitate and support the planning required for the development of lots 1 and 11, and whereas $50,000 is required as a contribution to services for planning of the design and public infrastructure required in the development of lots 1 and 11, and whereas the FY 2016 budget does not include an appropriation in that amount, they're, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2016 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows, increase current surplus available, 01000-469810 by 50,000, increase in planning and zoning by an equivalent amount.
All right, if not, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2385, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. I'm sorry, 2384. I have, my mistake. 2384. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2385 for the first reading. Mr. Tillman.
This is an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the City of Salisbury for the period from July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period and establishing the appropriation for the water and sewer, parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds. Be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule A operating budget appropriations are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2017, to fund operations of the City of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule B capital project appropriations are hereby appropriated for capital projects. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule C anticipated grant fund expenditures are hereby appropriated for the grants listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memorandums in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained that the tax levy be in the same as hereby set at .9432 per $100 of assessed valuation of all real property, and at $2.21 per $100 of assessed valuation for all personal property, subject to taxation by the City of Salisbury for general fund purposes, including debt service purposes, exclusive of revenues derived from the Water and Sewer Fund for the debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities. And whereas all taxes levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July 1st, 2016, and shall be due and payable as specified in Title 14 of the Tax Property Article, the Antedated Code of Maryland, is amended, that all fees adopted by this ordinance and all other fees currently in effect shall remain so unless changed at a future date by the Salisbury City Council. And be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury that a public hearing on the proposed budget ordinance will be held at, and I don't have that in here, so it's not yet scheduled, in Room 301 of the City-County Government Office Building, 125 North Division Street, Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the Salisbury City Council that this ordinance shall take effect upon final passage.
We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Irtan, Mr. Boda. Any questions?
Do we know that there's no scheduled public hearing yet? That's...
No.
Now, we've got it. The... Water and Sewer Rates is the ninth. And the final passage.
Ninth, 6:00 PM, this room.
Yep.
For Water and Sewer Rates?
No, that's, that's, that's full public hearing. Ninth, 6:00 PM, this room.
Mr. Tillman? I'm assuming they're going to be done on the same date?
Yes.
Yes. I was just going to say, for the edification of the Girl Scouts that are here, what Mr. Tillman just read is, all of this that we're getting ready to do for the next six weeks, these thousands and thousands of pages that spend $54 million every year, and that's where we're getting ready to start. I'm not sure what he said, 56 million. I'm not sure what he said.
How many million, girls? You know. How many million dollars? The mayor's hopeful that it's 56.
Yeah. We'll see. And we start tomorrow morning. You should come back tomorrow morning at 8:00, because we'll start tomorrow morning.
Yeah, you don't go to school tomorrow, so come join us.
That's right.
They were really good. I thought they'd rather be in school.
We're trying to entice people into public service.
True.
All right. Any other questions? All right, I'll call the motion then. Motion to approve the ordinance number 2385. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. I now want to entertain a motion to adopt, approve ordinance number 2386 for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson?
Second.
Mr. Irtan? Mr. Tillman?
Okay, this is the first reading of the Water and Sewer Ordinance that we just heard about, that'll be heard, obviously, on the same night as the budget ordinance. It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Water and Sewer Rates to increase rates by 2%, making said change as effective for all bills dated October 1st, 2016 and thereafter, unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the Water and Sewer Rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year 2017 budget of the City of Salisbury and the appropriation thereby made and established for the purposes of the Water and Sewer Departments. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council, the City of Salisbury, that following Water and Sewer Schedule shall be adopted by the City of Salisbury. Water and Sewer Rate Schedule, Schedule 1, metered water changes in city rates, residential and small commercial, there'll be a minimum charge of $19.89 per quarter, with a commodity charge of $2.97 per 1,000 gallons. Under the heading Commercial, the customer charge will be $372.17 per quarter, commodity charge $1.72 per 1,000 gallons. Large, Commercial/Industrial, customer charge $575.17 per quarter, commodity charge $1.38 per 1,000 gallons. Under Schedule 2, metered water charges outside city rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge $39.78 per quarter, commodity charge $5.94 per 1,000 gallons. Under Commercial, customer charge $744.33 per quarter, commodity charge $3.46, $3.46 per 1,000 gallons. Large Commercial/Industrial, customer charge $1,150.35 per quarter, commodity charge $2.78 per 1,000 gallons. Under Schedule 3 of metered water charges, Warwick Community College and Urban Service District Rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge $29.82 per quarter, commodity charge $4.46 per 1,000 gallons. Under Commercial, customer charge $558.26 per quarter, commodity charge $2.59 per 1,000 gallons. Under Large Commercial/Industrial, customer charge $862.76 per quarter, $2, and then, the commodity charges... commodity charge is $2.08 per 1,000 gallons. And then we have Schedule 4 Sewer Charges in City Rates, Residential and Small Commercial, minimum charge $49.12 per quarter, commodity charge $7.36 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, customer charge $927.95 per quarter, commodity charge $4.28 per 1,000 gallons. Large Commercial/Industrial, customer charge $1,431.40 per quarter, commodity charge of $3.43 per 1,000 gallons. Schedule 5 is the sewer charge outside city rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge $98.26 per quarter, commodity charge $14.74 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, customer charge $1,855.88 per quarter, commodity charge $8.55 per 1,000 gallons. Large Commercial/Industrial, customer charge $2,862.80 per quarter, commodity charge $6.87 per 1,000 gallons. Schedule 6 is the sewer charges, Warwick Community College and Urban Service District rates, residential and small commercial, minimum charge of $73.70 per quarter, commodity charge $11.06 per 1,000 gallons. Commercial, customer charge $1,391.91 per quarter, commodity charge $6.41 per 1,000 gallons. Large Commercial/Industrial, customer charge $2,147.09 per quarter, commodity charge $5.16 per 1,000 gallons. Schedule 7 Sewer Charges, Sewer Only Customers, and that is broken down by the number of fixtures here. Quarterly in-city rate for one to two fixtures is $62.83. Quarterly outside city rate is $125.66. And the quarterly urban service district rate is $94.25. For three to five fixtures, it's quarterly in-city rate, $94.25. Quarterly outside city rate, $188.50. Quarterly urban service district rate, $141.37. And for six to 20 fixtures, quarterly in-city rate, $135.46. Quarterly outside city rate, $270.91. And quarterly urban service district rate of $203.18. And for every five fixtures over, it's gonna be $55.86 for the in-city rate, $111.71 for quarterly outside city rate, and $83.78 for the quarterly urban service district rates. And it looks like we're getting near the end here. Schedule 8 Commercial and Industrial Activities, for each fire service, annual in-city rate, $373 for annual outside city rate, $746. And for each standby operational service, annual in-city rate, $373 and $746 for annual outside city rate. And then there's also some changes to the definitions there. Would you like me to read those, or shall I spare you?
You can spare us.
Okay. I thought I'd announce the numbers, just since it was the first reading.
That's fine. Girls, he did that with three breaths. Questions?
Just a question about, a point of information. This has to be voted on tonight in order to keep it on the schedule for the things on the budget.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll call the motion. Motion to approve ordinance number two three eight six for the first reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Nay?
Nay.
Chair votes aye.
Something of unintended consequences, I would imagine, Mr. Council President. I'll change my vote to nay for the sole sake of the discussion of the water and sewer budget, the changes that have been made over the last several years, but I'm going to say publicly that I'm not in favor of an increase in the water and sewer rates. And 2% on my $100 a quarter bill is going to be, you know, $2, and I understand that, but I would prefer to have us have this, the discussion and look at the lines, but for the purpose of moving this forward so that we can get to the discussion, I don't think it's tomorrow, you all said what it, when it was, but for the sake of, of making sure that this doesn't become unaligned, and I would hope that if anyone outside this building said that Irtan voted for a increase this evening, I would depend on the three of you to defend me and say I did it for the discussion.
I appreciate, I appreciate.
For the purpose of discussion. So I'll change my vote to yea.
Thank you.
I just, you know, as a city resident and someone who's been in the city for a while, I've, I've seen my water sewer rates down here, and now all of a sudden, like everybody else, we're way up here, there will need to be an extraordinary amount of evidence to convince me to vote for a water and sewer rate increase, which is, well, I'll still, I'm still maintaining my net.
Okay, I will look forward to that discussion. Mr. Mayor, you have a comment?
Well, Mr. Irtan, why would you care what anybody said about how you vote tonight?
I can't imagine.
Today.
I can't imagine.
No, I'm kidding.
Probably all over Twitter right now.
For the, for the new council persons, you'll, you'll find out in the financial health presentation why a 2% increase in the, and, and all of us, I think, have appreciated the fact that over the last, if you look back at the history, our, you know, five, six, seven, eight years ago, actually, it was earlier than that, I think it was before you were in office, our, our water and sewer rates skyrocketed. And then under Mayor Irtan's leadership, and, you know, our council was able to bring them down, but there's a, there's an unintended consequence there. And the financial health presentation will address Mr. Boda's questions. That may not mean you support a, an increase, a 2% increase in the rates, but it'll address why we think that it's the fiscally responsible thing today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Nickles, you got the change in the?
Thank you, Mr. Irtan. Just give me your time, Jack.
No one will dare say that.
Okay. We do have a public comment tonight. Let's see now. Mr. Michael Lane, and he, he'd like to speak about, if I'm reading this correctly, I hope I am, empowering distressed communities slash coalition. Mr. Lane?
Hello? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lane?
City Council, Mr. Lane. And, oh, Lord, thanks a lot. You know, I represent the people, we the people. We the people says that it's elected officials, nonprofit organizations, citizens of America, and together we are then talking about a coalition if we come together. But my concern is dealing with empowering the distressed communities. When the upper and middle-class communities, they have, I hear they have these, all these programs. If we're gonna empower Salisbury with the $5.8 million in the, in the business district downtown Salisbury, then we need to take some of this monies and put them into the low-income poverty-stricken communities. I have been attempting to contact city council members and haven't been successful in doing that. And we need more accessibility, being able to, when we pick up the phone as citizens, to be able to talk with the city council, to address our issues. We may differ, but we still have to come to put what we have our interests and our thoughts on the table to, to talk about what's going on. The conditions that's in the low-income, the poverty-stricken communities, where there's no rec centers, there's no community centers. There isn't a playground for some of the kids. You have, in some of these communities, we have to cross a major highway to get to the playground, let's say Church Street, for instance, to cross the major highway to get to a playground that's right across the street from, from this building here, which puts our kids in danger. Our kids are playing in the streets. They do not have a playground area. They don't know basketball. We talking about empowering Salisbury. We need to empower our community, the children. If we don't give them counseling to adjust their behaviors, if we don't give them vocational tutoring for training, that they can become independent people and not dependent on the system of handouts, we'll give them food, we'll give them shelter, we've got affordable housing. We need affordable housing, 'cause everyone doesn't make. A lot of folks making earnings are less than $8,000 in these low-income subsidized housing. We need to be able to come together, the organizations that's been in, been these nonprofit organizations that have been exist, in existence for four to five years or more, the city council, and the Christian community, where instead of giving the folks food, which they need, uh, well, but we need to create the programs for computer operations, the plumbing, electricity, those things that will allow them to become independent people, and we could take the burden off the city. I, I was just sitting in my chair, and I hear all the monies that has been spent for the infrastructure of this city. We need that. We need those, that, these things to be maintained, but I never heard anyone talk about the monies going into the distressed communities. Nobody has said, "Look, we're gonna take some monies, or we're gonna take, take up the donations, and we're gonna try to renovate a building. We're gonna try to purchase a building, a facility where we can have programs, structured programs within these communities so that we can empower our people, empower the people in these low-income communities." Without the knowledge and how to be effective, or how to, to go out and, and tap, and, I used the word, tap into the resources, then they don't know. We have to be able to bring them into a facility, give them their information, teach them, teach them finance, teach them how to save a dollar, and, and how to budget their money so that they can then move forward. I thank you. I just, I have so much I wanna talk about, but I can get kind of too speedy, too, too much. So, I thank you. I would like for the city council, the mayor, nonprofit organizations, the Christian bodies, the Christian community, to come to the table and put our thoughts and ideas on the table. We may not approach each situation in the same manner, but we need a solution in how we can resolve the issues that's in the distressed communities. That means come out the comfort zone and walk the communities. I walk the communities. And I ask the people, "What is it that you need?" That's the city council. They need a voice within the community. And we, together, if we come together, then we can have that voice for the community, which the city council members and the districts are supposed to be, I'm thinking, because we voted you in office, a lot of you. And we need you to act, or pass, or grant, give monies into the community. Housing has a, has a, a, a program that you could purchase the building. Under the Department of Recreation, if you purchase a building on, in these communities, renovate them, under the Department of Correction, not Corrections, Department of Recreation, they can then hire folks to come in, or we can have the interns from the school, from the college, to get their experience as they go graduate and go into the world. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. I, I just, one, once, you wanna do?
Sure, man. Well, yeah, sure.
The only.
Councilors of order allow that to address people who have made statements?
Well, we, we sometimes have, and sometimes haven't. Well, but I'll, but I'll say, take a look in this budget, Mr. Lane, you'll find a lot of the things you just said are in there.
Yes.
There's, our largest capital item is, our largest, you know, general fund capital item is a community center. The funding for a building for a community center. There's programs for a youth employment program, there's funding for youth athletic programs. I think everybody sitting at this table agrees with you.
Yep.
I think we agree with.
Mr. Lane, we, this is not for discussion now, because we.
And, and the last thing I'll add is, we, we're getting ready to appoint a Youth Development Advisory Committee that will come to, to council, and, you know, we've got the good fortune, I actually see somebody sitting in the room who, whose name I, I'm getting ready to forward as a member of that committee, but there's, there's, you're absolutely right, and I think we all see the very same things you're seeing.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Nickles, we can lead, we can lead this right here?
Yes.
Yeah.